Next, we have 70 Loring Road. Joey, are you presenting on 70 Loring Road? Anyone else presenting on 70 Loring? All right, could everybody that's going to be part of the presentation come up, please? We've given this about 45 minutes. Who are you? I'm Al Aalat, I'm the chairman of the board. The board members are...
Is that right?
Louis Chalamet. And is Dave coming tonight?
Yes, he is, and he should have been here.
Oh, okay. So, we'll give this 45 minutes. If you could walk through the presentation, just say about 45 minutes.
Okay.
Then that gives us some time for plenty more comments, and then comments from the audience if there are. So, go ahead, start, Joey.
Joey Fonseco, Metro West Engineering, here presenting 70 Loring Road. The owner is Joe Disipio. The architect is Henry, and Kirsty is the National Design Department. I'll just walk you through quickly the neighborhood inventory plan. I'm going to start here, just go clockwise. Eighty-three Loring, four-bedroom dwelling, 6700 square feet. Seventy-three Loring, five-bedroom, RFGA of 3800 square feet. One Meadowbrook Road, four-bedroom, 3400 square feet. Twelve Meadowbrook, five-bedroom dwelling, 3100 square feet. Eighteen Meadowbrook is a six-bedroom dwelling, RFGA of 10,400 square feet. Our locus, which is 70 Loring Road, has four bedrooms, existing dwelling, 3600 square foot home. Seventy-four Loring, four bedrooms dwelling, 5500 square foot home. And nineteen Meadowbrook Road, it is a five-bedroom dwelling, RFGA of 7500 square feet. That's just kind of a walk around the neighborhood. As mentioned, we're at 70 Loring Road. It's a 1.35 acre site, fairly wooded, some mature trees, rather propellant vines in the fronts, and red oats and white oats in the rear. Houses sort of centrally located, actually over the building setback by three or five feet exist. Two curb cuts along Loring, and the driveway leads to a garage on the side here. Patio located in the rear yard. Topography is, there's basically an old, on the westward side in the rear of the yard, and everything basically slopes down towards Loring Road. A lot of ledge and boulders, properties that were located in the backyard, and it sort of flattens out towards the front. With the dense, sort of mature pine trees, a lot of them healthy trees. Kirsty will let that go through. The total impermeability on the site is about 7,600 square feet, which is about 13% of the lot. Currently no drainage controls on the site, and we did perform some soil tests of septic as well as drainage, and they were revealed a lonely sands at the sea horizon, basically only in the front section of the yard. We didn't do a test in back here, because we know there's a lot of ledge, basically what that was formed in. Yeah, the peak on the existing roof is about 151.9, which is 22 feet above the existing green on the side. We've got show the volume dwellings to the property. Meadowbrook Road is here. And it's basically a bit existing. I'm going to start off by reviewing the site plan that we presented at the sidewalk. There's only a few that were present, but just kind of walk you through quickly what was presented at the sidewalk. For the proposed site plan, we're showing a new house location. Obviously, the existing house was going to be razed, and red shows the existing footprint. The two curb cuts along Loring were going to be removed. There's going to be a new curb cut off of Meadowbrook Road, shown here. Sorry, title of the work around it, showed some grading and drainage associated with that. There's a lot of concern at the sidewalk regarding the driveway, safety concerns on Meadowbrook Road, that we heard from both the board and also some of the others. There was also a few other issues regarding the drainage system and location of generators. So, since the sidewalk, we've prepared a revised site plan to address some of those concerns that I presented. So, as you can see, this is the revised proposed site plan. We've removed the Meadowbrook Road driveway access. We're basically keeping the existing curb cut on Loring on this side, closing off this section. The existing driveway width is approximately 11 feet, varies, 12 feet. We're increasing it to 14 feet, essentially holding this edge of the pavement and extending the driveway south.
14-foot wide driveway?
14-foot wide driveway, which then in turn turns into a three-car garage on the side of the building. Again, house location, the house location did change, the same house footprint that was stayed down in summer. Rear deck and a rear patio on the house. This shows the proposed septic system. Again, it's in sort of the most favorable position, location on the site with regards to soil condition and water table. We've also tightened up the limit of work. As you can see, we're tightening it up, so that we're not proposing any work within the rear yard. And this plan also indicates some of the trees that are being removed, and a few that are going to be spared, you know, with the widening of the driveway and some of the grading. It's really just minimal grading involved for the septic system. It's just to create a pitch over the top of the system, so we're not sending any water to sit on top of it. We've got a 2% pitch across it, sort of mimics what's there now. Again, this section of the driveway will be removed, and the wall will be sort of infilled or repaired with the existing stone materials on site.
Is this a, is the wall in the right way?
It is not, it's on the property. The right way is, yeah, so the wall's within the property. The proposed, the entire roof, as well as this portion of the driveway, will be captured, collected, and sent to an infiltration system located here. Stores and infiltrates up to the under your store, so they have full storage with it. As you can probably see from the other plan, we removed the southerly infiltration system. We had split the system. One was for the driveway, collecting this portion of the driveway, and one was the roof area. We've now combined the system to cap the whole driveway and move it around. And there's, we still have a 20% reduction rate onto Loring, and a 19% reduction in volume onto Loring. Part of the change, one of the comments from the board, or from the neighbors, was they were sort of like, "Generate your location, it was previously here along with the air conditioner condenser units." We've now moved the generator location to here, to the side of the garage. We needed 6 feet of clearance between the building, and that would have pushed it too close to the building setback, and obviously closer to people in the property, to the center. The proposed peak is now 166.27, which is 14 feet higher than the existing house. The averages of grade play around the house is 131.8.
Now it's 60?
So, it's 30, what was that? 166.27 is the proposed.
And the old one was 22 feet above the macro grade?
It was 22 feet, correct, yeah. 30, right, yeah. So, it's 34.5 feet above the average existing grade. The proposed total proposed impermeability surface is now 9,400 square feet, which is an increase of about 1,760 square feet of additional permeability.
What's the proposed RFGA?
Eighty-five 58. And that's first floor, second floor, attic space, and garage.
So, if there are any questions on the site plan, I'll turn them to Henry, walk you through the...
Yeah.
Also, moving on out of HP Design, where the architects kind of were designing house design. The plans that were submitted, Joey, I think it was April 30th, is that right? You have copies, I have more copies, no one has copies, okay? The proposed rendering at this, across one, 100% of the current design changes in commercial. Okay, I'm sure I have more copies.
I'm sorry, you can look up.
Okay.
Well, that's all right, if you, if you need one more.
So, the house we're proposing is a luxury biennial. It is 12 rooms, five bathrooms and two half baths on three floors. The design is a courtyard shape, and primarily, the reason for that is the driveway activity happens inboard, and staying away from the buffer, giving us more area to deal with buffering and landscape architecture between the edge of the building and the property lines. The house is 8,558 square feet, total RFGA. The house also is 35 feet tall. Yes, exactly.
The driveway's actually coming around this point?
That's correct. And so, the cars park, apartment goes through the front door, keeping all the driveway activity away from the sides of the building. The house is just 135 feet tall from the, is it the natural grade plane they called it last?
Right.
Yes, so it's 35 feet tall, 34 feet, 11 and 1/2 inches, and that's depicted on A2.1.
2.1?
Yep. Average natural grade plane to the range, 34, 11 and 1/2, it's 35 feet tall, to the highest point, so we have a couple of feet in terms of its overall height. The house is a shingle style, true divided light windows, extended race, lots of details. We have a slight blockout condition at the basement, because the grate figures off. So, we're proposing A2.2. We'll see some penetration along the back. We still have a bulkhead, because we don't think we get a full blockout condition out of the basement, so we still need a bulkhead for color purposes. We're proposing basically chiming along back into the house, and this is a decorative chimney that we haven't quite developed yet at this time. The only thing that's not consistent here is this element, and this element could change a few times. And this is later than this, so this has not been depicted in the rendering. The rendering came a little bit earlier. And if you look on the last sheet, it says all the, all these own calculations that will cross line with that, with Joey's numbers.
Are you doing lighting?
No.
That's the landscape marketing?
No, nothing.
All right. Is she also going to do building intensive lighting?
Sorry, what's the question?
Building intensive lighting.
Is there only a landscape plan, if you have?
We don't, actually.
Well, I have copies right here.
Okay.
It may be beneficial to at least walk through for the board where the flights are on the building.
Do you want just the building, or the whole?
Although landscaping and building lights.
We have a postlight at the entrance, Loring. We have another postlight down here at the end of the driveway. We have a series of pathlights in the rear, or there's a blue zone patio back here, so there's a series of small pathlights here, same with the dump here, and then we have the garage here. We have some recess ceiling lights above the front porch here, and then we have some wall mounts on the front of the garage, four of them.
These are four?
Yes.
So, that's, at least, those these?
Yes. Now, it's a total of 19,200 rooms.
So, where's the postlight at the end, I'm sorry?
At the entrance here, and then one at the end of the driveway. It just feels for turnaround over here, and those lights are what the neighbors immediately have over here. Well, we have all these everything planned into the course here, trying to talk to the buyer, everything.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry.
All right.
There's just no lighting on this side over here for turnout.
This, this cut shows the, an exposed bulb right in the middle of the matter. Is that, is that what you're proposing to do?
I'm interested, there is a spike for a dark sky compliant bulb in the back of those spec sheets, that would be installed in all the fixtures with any type of glass around them.
Okay, so what's the, what's the difference?
It's dark sky compliant, there's no light that sheds outward, it all sheds downward.
So, it looks like this type of fixture, it's the interior, it's mounted up as a shield, the shield?
The light itself is shielded.
The light bulb is shielded? So, what happens when that light bulb blows out, and the owners don't know about this thing?
It's a simple twist and...
Yeah, but it's a simple go, and have to buy them, costly to buy this now.
No, you're not talking about the bulb.
Are you talking about the bulb? Are you talking about the bulb? The bulb is a special dark sky.
Now, it's a gizmo, the gizmo. The question is, how easy is it to remove the gizmo?
Right, right, or the question, we're not so sure about this, but anyway.
And then the, the, you said there was some garden light, those are in the walls, the garden lights?
There are some, actually, I haven't addressed those yet. We do have some wall lights. Actually, these are also up lights right here, along the, there's a retaining wall on the back of the driveway here, and it's 5 feet tall, so that there's some landscape lights in the plant bed there.
Do you have any idea how many, some more than, probably more than two?
About four.
I don't know.
No, there are four.
Okay, so, with self-works?
Yes. They don't sound really dark sky compliant when they're going up like that. Generally, the walls, we have these little downlight things. Well, no, they're in the plant bed, they're coming up on the wall, they're wall lights.
Yeah, but...
But they're aimed up? Yes.
Be dark sky compliant?
Couldn't be.
I believe they're coming up, yes, exactly. They're casting on the wall, so that we're backing into the, because there's a retaining wall, it's set for, actually, give the downlight. They would just be different fixtures, they just do.
So, you can just screw that, you wind it up.
People usually just look at it. Just in the spirit of the...
Screw that.
Okay.
So, when you say wall light, is that this thing, that's the, is this the one that goes up?
Yes, they could bring the filter, change it, that the filter, what we expanded the light.
This thing?
It's an adapter?
It's a thing you screw onto that?
Yeah, it sounds like an adapter, and it's something. It's something, that's what it is. So, it's actually a light bulb?
Did you see this, Marv?
Do you want me to do it, so I can show? The average hours of the year, so we can reflect that. Kim, have you seen this?
How's it, it's a way to shut it down?
It actually looks like it's a bulb.
With a case around it?
Right, because it says it has an average hour, and shells being out for the, so to me, that would mean that when this blew out, 15,000 hours of that one, it would have to replace, because it's actually the same bulb.
Which may or may not be...
Could just be a regular bulb.
Right, exactly, and then...
It would fix that down to software.
Yeah. Get what I mean?
Sorry. Yeah, it just screws in. So, when it burns out, or when you wanted, if you didn't want to keep it, you could just take that out and put a regular bulb in. So, it really overrides the whole intent of the dark sky fixture. We're not, nobody's going to be driving or making sure that the bulbs aren't screwed in.
Don't reveal that, Al. Dave does it, he drives around.
All night long, gave it away, all night long.
All night long, he's out there.
So, but there's certainly dark sky, you know, there's lots of good dark sky stuff that's in the same style, and that shouldn't be part of it all.
Yeah, you could put the bulb right up in the housing.
And then it's not a big deal, you've got to change it, you don't have to go looking for some specialty item that may or may not be made, there's five years, something. That'd be doing it all.
What's the rating on the generator?
60 kilowatt? I was kind of...
Yeah, do we know what the, what the, what the noise generation rating is?
Uh, yes.
Is it 65?
So, it's 62, but then, 65 and then 72, but the distance is still an issue in that it's so close to the park line. But also, I had a question on even just the sizing, because of the fact that just previously, you know, we were looking at a 25 kilowatt that had, I guess, comparable noise, but one of the questions would be, is just really the size as well? It's, that's something that would need to be screened by, by some sort of enclosure, unless, you know, it could basically be put in a location that then, you know, you can basically alter one like that retaining wall to put it closer to the driveway, to sort of sink it down someplace.
Right now, it's, if I remember correctly, it's now at the end of the garage. Yeah, right there.
And that's sort of, that's, that's getting to be towards the high point. I mean, it still slopes up a little bit, but that's up a little higher.
Why so big? That's very big. I mean, I know it's a big house, with a lot of lighting, but why so big?
Again, this was just a proposal, we're not ourselves going to put that in, filtrations that I would recommend size it to run the whole house, if you have the whole house.
I thought the problem was, when they first came on, they could cycle them, that it was the initial drawdown, that they needed a lot of power for. Dave, am I right? And that once they, if you like have a sequential binary...
I mean, that's, well, that, I mean, he kind of just, it's the whole house.
Yeah, it's every light bulb.
Do we really do, really?
And it's, you know, that's getting kind of close to like a...
Commercial.
Commercial one, I mean, that's, honestly, that's like the size they talk about when I do schools, to kind of get around that, and if you have an elevator, you don't have an elevator, that type of thing. General residential ones, 25.
Yeah.
You know, and that gets you, you know, it's pretty much everything, except, not everything all at once.
Except maybe not the sauna.
Yeah, you know...
Also, you can get the sound levels for them, and they weren't that much...
They're not much different, but they're just smaller. You know, so they're easier kind of to get on the site.
Easier to block?
And then, yeah, obviously, they're like fragile cost. I mean, they're, you know, it's a, it's a Generac, so it's like a, it's a, it's like a residential package. I don't even know what this one looks like. Is it like squares or the...
It's a pink box, this is it.
Yeah, that's a commercial.
That's a commercial.
You're gonna, that's, you're not going to get your return on that, because that will cost you five times like a Generac. And that, the Generacs are meant for be residential.
No, it isn't a Generac, it's a large residential one.
Yeah, they're talking about the ones that always have like screw corners on it and stuff.
Yeah, that's what Joey was talking about.
Talk to the lighting guy, you're going to get a lot of lights. Talk to the electrician, you're going to get a lot of electricity.
You saying there's some self-interest?
No, I mean, because he's probably not thinking he's the guy who's going to, he's not going to buy it from his electrician or anything like that, but you know, that's, you know, if electrician had his Disneyland, he's going to have a 65 watt generator, and you know, with a transfer switch, and the whole neighborhood's going to go dark, and no one loses TV, so. I think the, the sound doesn't change much, because they, you know, but the price does, and then kind of fitting it on the site makes it a lot easier.
Yeah.
Well, how close are you to the parking lot, where this is located?
If we go back to Joey's site plan, it's actually not that, doesn't move it that far away from the neighboring...
Around the corner.
Just around the corner. Kind of, kind of around the corner. But it's, it moves it closer to the guy next to the other guy. Yeah, so how far is that from the...
37...
In terms of being...
Because sound guys, you are. Sound wise, this one's rated at 72, 7 meters, 72, 20 d.
It's about 50.
So, it would drop off to maybe 50, at the park line, but it needs to get down to 40 to go.
I think you should see if there's some way you can put it right here, use the retaining wall like Joe was saying, for maybe two sides of it, and it would also, and landscape around it, it would also be moving in a further way.
Is that something, I mean, we could certainly look at, it's just bring this retaining wall, just put it on, and sign it somewhere in there, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, right.
So, you'd get foam in it, it's easier to put in.
I mean, you might be able to get it in this corner and landscape around it without doing anything.
Yeah, I think there was clearance issues with, I mean, 6 feet.
That's, that's the other issue with going to the larger size, not only do you need more clearance, but then also, because our last decision, we had one that was smaller, I was just looking, and I never had looked at this before, so the amount of like natural gas for the exercise cycle for the 25 kilowatt one we saw is 60 cubic feet per hour. This is 123 cubic feet per hour, so, so, I mean, it is double. And then at full load, it's 862 cubic feet per hour versus 390. So, there's also for the homeowner, there's also incentive saying, look, you know, there's a difference between overkill for the size, and then also how much, even if you don't use every single light in the house, because realistically, people don't leave them on all the time, maybe, but there also is an impact as far as the cost just to run, run this, that at least could be taken into consideration.
Okay, so I think we've flogged that horse. We interrupted the discussion on the landscape design, maybe we can go back to that. Go ahead.
Okay. Let's see, why don't we start with, we've moved in quite a few trees along the driveway area here in order to avoid, and also quite a few down in this area here, there, when we took our sidewalk in part to that, there's quite a few trees that are being completely swallowed by ivies, so they're a variety of... So, we're proposing 10 to 12 foot evergreen buffer along the south end of the property, as well as the one that offered the house, the Loring Road side.
What are they?
These are white spruces, 10 to 12 feet, on the north and south, and here we have white pears, 10 to 12 feet, on Loring Road.
What are the others?
The others, we have here.
The other, it looks like there are sinew trees also?
Yes, we have, there's a, a couple of amalechia, actually, there's three amalechia, I have a bunch of dogwoods down there, a papermark maple, and then there's a bunch of burned downer maximum to kind of shield the new paved driveway from neighbors.
All right, let's just take the corner.
Here?
Yes, the pale green ones are what?
These are mountain papyrus, we have a series of larger ones, and then smaller ones here, and then 50. These are mountain pyrrhous, we have a series of larger ones and then smaller ones here, and then papermark maple.
Okay, so that, those are, those are shrubs in ground cover under a maple?
Yes.
Okay, and?
Then around that, we have burned down maximum, amalechia, white firs here, another amalechia. Understory here, there's some more pyrrhous, more white firs, ten to twelve feet.
All right, and what goes along the driveway on the other side?
Over here, this is all existing vegetation that we're not checking. The vegetation, it's, it's looked up quite a bit right there, so it's, it varies. There's, there's trees, there's shrubs, there's understory, just a diverse evergreen combination. So, I think it's, I'm going to just check three or four feet from there.
And pyrrhous, I mean, they can get bigger days, but you know, you don't.
But again, it's, 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 you know, when you, the bigger you buy of those shrubs, they're so leggy. The risk of losing them is greater than, I think, waiting for them to pour.
So people driving out, fucking, backing up from the garage, turning, going across, you know, down the curve, headlights into the house adjacent, how is that?
Well, the, the, the house, you know, there's, I, I just, just to, I, I know that we're not supposed to incorporate the other property here, but I just wanted to let you know, there are some mature evergreens here and some hemlocks that begin right here, and so we take, you know, on in this direction with large evergreens. So I feel like, I mean, this house is up here, I don't really feel like he's gonna see the headlights. And in fact, the existing driveway is back here.
Yeah, there's, there's a, about a four foot firm, that's the one that holds property on it. So he planted, he normally would like to, that's where all the entrances.
Well, they're, they're a little bit further back here with the hemlocks, and then there's, like you said, there's also, there's also burned down, this is pretty thickly planted from, from here over. And this area actually looks into his backyard where he's at. So I, I really don't feel like the lights from the car here want to impact his property.
I mean, somehow this just can, it might be crazy, this front plantings just seem a little thin to me. I mean, I like this, this is great, but there's, there's nothing else to bring down, it just sounds like you've got to be.
Can you, can you just mention the existing trees? I don't think we talked about.
There are a bunch of existing trees here that we are not taking out, so there's, there's existing vegetation as well down there.
Is that what almost circles are, are those existing trees?
Yes, exactly.
And how many are, how many are actually going to be taken out? Because you've got the leach field in there, so.
There's a total of fifty-three coming out.
Fifty-three trees are coming out.
Which include trees within the footprint as well.
I mean, the majority of the trees are.
They got, they're all gonna be gone.
In that rear or front yard, but I think a lot of those were, because they used that.
So it's, so to say that there are a lot of trees on the site, actually, when you get down to it, the question is how many are left, really?
Well, there's also a whole bunch on the other side of the property, which I don't even touch at all.
Okay, just one to the left.
But how many are left in the, behind the screen planting that you're putting along the board?
Up along here, I'd say.
I have seven.
Seven?
And five being removed in that same area.
How can you tell where the existing?
Joey, do you have the, as a board, the tree removal plan?
This is the only existing line I see, right?
I think that's it. I think these are the directions.
There's some, they're not shown, that's right, Joey, this is, like, this is one. One here, there's one here, one here. Joey has, I think, a better plan to sort of see.
Sorry, I just circled them kind of.
Yeah.
But why don't they open out, I just kind of draw a shadow.
Well, quite a few of these over here are diseased, maybe canopy.
Yeah, the, the ones in the front yard are not in good shape at all. Their canopy is way up high and they're all covered with invasive spines growing all the way up to the top. Which is part of the reason why we also said that the program needed to shift because we want the trees to go out in the back.
There's also quite a few that are, you know, within inches of this driveway and just repaving the driveway if we kept it at ten feet or eleven feet, twelve feet, depending on
Well, but, but is that true? I mean, if you, if you kept the existing driveway the same width and just repaved it, why would that necessarily be a problem for the existing trees?
I'm not just saying. Problem with the tree, I think it'd be like a maintenance issue with the driveway too, because the roots are right at the driveway edge currently. There's large pine trees that are on the driveway, even sorry, so.
Some of them are in pretty rough shape.
These two are saved?
Yes.
These two. And there are no others?
I, I mean.
There are no others that could be saved like these two?
Or if you kept the driveway.
I think, yeah, I think these are in much better shape. These, these are, these are being strangled over here.
You know, one of the things that Sue was talking about is the same. We kept those kind of, we just kept the driveway the same width, and kept those trees. Then you get, you have an automatic screen, don't you, or?
No, I mean, it's, we're still higher up, and I, I would suggest, you know, I've talked a little bit about this via email this evening, but I think we need to augment the front a little bit more. And then, because this is so tight in here, you can't really fit much, and I appreciate the fact they're trying to use the existing driveway, but we might want to sprinkle come up some of these in this zone here to take the, you know, the curse off of outside. Because this house, he was at the sidewalk as well, you know, they're kind of upper stormy, that's what we're looking at each other, so.
All right, and this house, the ridge height's going up like twenty feet, so this house is going along here.
Yes, I think a little bit more kind of in this zone here, and then maybe some through here.
Can you do a little bit more, can you do a little bit more of a mix?
Down here, down here.
Yeah, but sometimes it's nice to have some laurel thrown in, maybe some gibberish, and there's a whole list of wonderful shrubs to mix maybe up, just because it's a little bit more naturalistic for people riding by on laurel.
But I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to think, why couldn't we keep the driveway the same width and just keep those trees?
So we could.
There, there's a little bit of pushback coming from the fire department on what's the driveways. We actually have a staff level meeting next Tuesday to discuss this. Eighteen Welsley, for example, the fire department's wrote on the building permit, application that they wanted eighteen feet.
Oh, come on.
So we backed them off and basically have this, this staff level meeting and to try to come to some sort of understanding because, you know, like they said, for Love Lane, their stabilizers, when they go back, go out, for their larger trucks are greater than twelve feet. And what I had asked for eighteen Welsley was, well then, why don't we come up with some sort of stabilizers off, I mean, some sort of stabilization method like we did at Love Lane, that didn't have the driveway pavement going out as wide as they wanted. And I, we'll just have to consider that as a construction change later on. But this is an issue that they raised on a couple of, just building department level permits with the driveway, and we need to get a hold on, on that.
Well, I, as far as I'm concerned, what, what I'm interested in is good sightline. Whether we can get the largest fire truck that the world makes into everybody's house.
And for this driveway, you know, even, you know, we can sit down and with fire and say, look, is there an area, once you get in, if you needed a little extra room for stabilization, can we look at that rather than saying, okay, it's fourteen feet all the way in? I mean, that's.
It's a road.
Yeah.
It's a road.
I mean, that's exactly, wired and something.
Yeah, I know.
What's Meadowbrook's road?
Eighteen feet.
Oh, that's gonna be on the driveway, I don't think so. It's a roadway.
So I, I shared, I, I'd sort of stay with the existing width, whatever it's intended well.
We have an existing driveway here, but we're not deviating from it. It's been there since, you know, God knows when. I, I'd say, in this case, keeping those trees is a good minority.
Is uprooting the driveway, maintenance of the driveway coming into play at all, or?
What do you mean?
Do roots going into the driveway coming up through it?
Well, I don't know, Kim, what do you, what do you, what is your feeling on that?
I mean, those are mature trees, I don't see that they, they do just too much more damage. It just seems to me like it'd be a shame to keep them out, because they do provide just a normal stream in there.
Right.
If they re, if they like re-Asphalt the driveway and stuff, you know, this damage, you know, danger of damage from the roots, a threat to the trees?
If they, they wouldn't be, yeah, they're not.
Yeah, but I mean.
You're saying we're moving subgrade?
We're moving driveway to put a new smooth driveway, and how would you do that?
Depending on material there, we couldn't, yeah.
It's a driveway, you know, I mean, it's.
But still more teachers who get to deal with it in the future.
I mean, the point is, it's a good thing to try to keep them. And so we'll either see if we can do that.
Is there a way you can do it by removing the driveway and adding, you know, six inches of ground or something that would be nice to the trees before you then?
Well, they're gonna, they're gonna reach for the areas that are sort of most resource rich and have the least resistance. We want to kind of coax them, you know, like. But again, they're mature, and I think you're gonna know pretty quickly whether the zone is.
And taking the trees down obviously costs plenty. Keeping, it's not enough present just to take them down.
Right.
I'm just worried about the future of, you have to excavate the material out if it does damage to the roots. That becomes the issue. And then if, if you think they're mature and I'm unsure, that's maybe the future.
Probably there's some down there, which kind of tree, what are they?
There's a mix of stuff.
Oh, there is white pine and red oak. The red oak's gonna be, yeah, that's a chaparral anyway.
But yeah, they're not as shallow as like, the, the pines will be shallow.
Are they really tall? Okay, so, so they're, right now, their feeder roots are in trip line, and they're really tall, so they're probably standing beyond the driveway on one side, right? Okay, so what, the trouble with excavating is you're gonna end up going after the roots, you're sort of the stable, right?
But how far down are you going? You know, it's like this.
Depending on the material, yeah.
I mean, that's, that's.
So you use the material that you don't go down so far?
Right, I mean, you're only going down about, it's not like you're, you know, that.
Right.
It's, it's this level. I don't see how much the sta, those are the staple.
Yeah, but not a problem keeping the trees, it's just the issue of.
Right, no, I understand, we're just trying to. But our goal is that we let the kids.
Moving out so much that pines that go.
It, it just looks like it creates a nice.
It does.
So, so who would we, who would we ask about this from a research by an arborist, somebody who would actually know a little bit about, you know, regenerating a driveway for urban short-term use, and obviously, we're.
Also, the overall health of trees that are this close to driveway.
But did they look, did they look on?
Some of those look pretty compromised. Yeah, and they're not. Those are healthier than the ones that are.
In the four, four, yeah, right, the ones that are in the circular driveway area would probably really all.
Wouldn't we try to maintain as many oaks as we could, and then?
Well, how many, this one, again, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. You know, this one, I, I don't know which ones are oaks and which ones are not oaks.
R O. R O is red oak.
Okay, so that, these two are red oaks, that one? What about this guy?
That's not always spruce, that should always go.
What about, these two are being saved? What about this one?
Red oak.
These are all.
White pine.
So we got, they're, okay, so these are pines, and anyway, the red and the reds are going in here. So we got oak, 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 oak. I thought it was, this, this one, this was an old oak. So it's, it's five. You can say five.
What I was thinking is if, you know, if one or two others, smaller ones were planted, kind of in order, that to be the succession of trees that those were coming down the house. Okay.
Yeah.
Also, just in terms of, you know, putting the site kind of attractive planting along the corner here, it would probably make sense to take this one out here so that we can put a smaller replacement specimen in there with the red and the.
Those two were pines, right?
This is a white pine, yes.
Yeah, this one's a pine. So the two red oaks are right there.
That's okay, yes.
What's the count?
Eighteen? Oh, no, actually.
It's an eight and then an eighteen.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So they're probably mid, mid height, they're not the super tall. We've had taken a closer look around the front yard, so.
I know, and that, I know.
I mean, I, but you guys are aware.
Kim, the, the planting along this, you know, we're talking about ten to twelves.
We talked about bumping a couple of those up.
Yeah, because this guy's right here.
Yeah.
Those, the ones down along the back, this south side, those are all ten and twelves, right?
These, yes.
Maybe those could go to twelve to fourteen.
I think it, you know, maybe not all of them, but.
No, some, right, yeah, have all the same height.
Right, it's so natural, they're kind of. So you're talking about bumping the ones we have here but not up here, because if you look at his sightline though, the trees is, the trees that we're planting are over here, so he's not even looking at the house. He's looking at on the hill.
Yeah, yeah. No, it's really this guy.
Yeah, okay.
He's gonna get, he's gonna get a full, he's gonna get the full body.
Yeah, because the only way he's really seeing what's going on is in the yard over here.
Yeah, yeah.
But this, but I.
This guy, this guy, is, you know, I'm really worried about this.
Okay.
He's gonna get it right. Who's this guy?
I think we're referring to you here. It's you, it's you, Peter, this guy.
You're the guy down here?
No, up there.
Oh, you're the guy up here.
Who's this guy down here? That's, yeah, and then this guy, this lady.
So that guy, he's the one.
Amy and George, Ray Dell, I'm here on their behalf, they did look at one that upriver, and there's the south.
All right, yeah, but. And we're talking about the one that is south.
You know, a ten to twelve foot tree, the, the ten to twelve is measured, you know, it's like a pencil, be a helping here, so. If you're putting in a twenty foot house, you've got two houses that are both the setbacks, and you really need some height, you know. So I, I would like to see some variation, maybe some larger sized trees, I think the quantity of trees is probably, you know, pretty good. The other concern would be maybe you go with something like a Norway spruce that could take some shade and really stays pretty bald heavy all the way. Yeah, it's just a preference I have.
And the first for the white spruce?
White spruce will take some shade.
Yeah, it's that the Norway spruce just gets so wide.
Yeah, I mean, I'm actually sort of envisioning this as a full screen, so I don't mind them, just, just roll right in.
What, what's your thinking, Dan, about the?
I've seen, well, again, I don't think a ten foot, ten to twelve would be so appropriate, but.
We're talking, we were talking about some twelve to fourteens, but maybe you're thinking bad on that?
Yeah, I mean, even just a couple of them, there might be a few key sightlines between bedrooms where you might even want also much larger tree.
So we got, we have right now, we have a total of ten trees in that, in that line. So, you know, what are we looking at for the size variation there? A couple fourteen to sixteen's or?
And Warren always used to say the fourteen to sixteen, because a fourteen.
Yeah.
Sixteen to eighteen was sixteen, because that's way there.
You can even throw in an eighteen to twenty, just, just one of them to break up maybe a key deal, and then drop through, do a couple of, you know, a couple of the smaller greens. But again, I don't think a ten to twelve is really gonna be.
Yeah, no, no. Kim, you're a fan of Norway spruce sort of.
Yeah, I mean, I agree, I, I just don't really care to be normative, but I think it's just, yeah.
But I don't, but I don't like the whole lineup, they're just a wall.
Yeah, I mean, maybe we add a couple, having, you know, maybe we do a couple of fourteen to sixteen, or sixteen, eighteen Norway's, and then, you know, some, some mid-range white spruce.
How about one sixteen to eighteen, two fourteen to sixteen's? How about one 16 to 18, two 14 to 16s?
And the rest?
And the rest, and then something like three or four 12 to 14s and a couple of 10, 10 to 12s, something like that? Is that-
I think three sizes, I saw you.
Three sizes?
Yeah, forget the small ones.
Forget the small ones?
Yeah.
Okay. So, wha-
Two 16, 18.
Norway spruce or?
Yeah, I would think a couple of Norway spruce would be fine there. That leaves us with eight, so then, three, the next size is down, and then-
14 to 16? Still Norway, or?
No, I would switch over to the white spruce.
Switch over to the white spruce?
Yeah, and then, um, the remainder would be 12 to 14.
Does that, does that sound about right, Dan, to you?
Yeah, I, I like Norway spruce.
Back off, Dan.
The other, the other thing is-
So, we came aboard Norway spruce. If we made, what if we made four of the 10 Norway spruce and the last white spruce? Okay.
Just while, while we're talking about the south side of the property, just, I know you touched on lighting. No, no lights on the facing one Meadowbrook? No doors? No lights or any doors?
No. There's no doors.
On this side?
Yep.
No.
No, no lights in the north. Okay. And then, in terms of, you have like a decibel rating that you're gonna be working with at the property line?
Our standard is 40, 40 dpa at the property line.
Okay. And then, one little last question. I noticed that the, the limit of work kind of came, came out at the front yard. It bowed down. Is that because there's an existing condition that's being, you know, something that's being removed? Or, I was just wondering. At the, yeah, one is around the existing driveway, which is here.
So, that's gonna be removed.
As it comes towards, I mean, we're talking about here, one Meadowbrook, right there.
Those were just-
Nope, nope.
Down at the bottom.
Oh, here. Yeah, why does the limit of work force the property line?
I think that was just for the removal of those, those trees.
Yeah, I feel like if we visit, you're removing the trees and that's why the limit of work comes down?
Yeah.
So, I would just ask that we review the carrot, you know, the condition of those trees and minimize, uh-
Those trees are not-
Limit of work.
I, I, could we keep the limit of work out, outboard with that and just?
Yeah, there's the foundation drain.
Right, there is a foundation drain located. Uh, there's a foundation drain located here, so, I mean, you know, if the health of these trees were, we're not grading it here or doing any other removals. It was just really just wrapping the limit of work around the trees over there. If anything, you can't really see the plant, but if this were to get picked up, we have, that leachy daily is here, we're just trying to offset all that existence of, 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 of the whole thing. Again, I just reiterate, just a review of the, I mean, health of the trees and if they can be, if they're, if they're, you know, vital and healthy, we'd like to keep them. Uh, it's really hard to tell because there was a lot of vines and stuff growing in them. I just know that you can't put them back once you take them down, so it might provide some skyline where the newer, the greens, you know, might top them.
Okay, we can take, we'll take another look at. Any other comments, Dan?
Yes, Peter? So, I'm on the north side and that, if I could see the landscape plan, which I haven't seen before, it's important to know that our property line is right on the north side of the driveway. And it goes all the way up, well, another, at least another 100 feet up towards Meadowbrook. And we have gardens out there, so I don't really view the location of the house as the deciding determinant as to the mass effect of a new building on the, on the neighboring property. Where it'd be a dramatic change from where we spent a lot of time in those gardens. And I'd, for that reason, I like good screening along there. And the way I see it now-
What part are you talking about, Peter? One to the far left here?
North.
North.
North, yeah, but-
I'm switching around. It's, um, it's up here.
I can't see what you're talking about.
That's the back part of the site.
Yeah, but we're not, and so, this is, this is, this house is up here, it would be his garden, so that's where.
They go throughout the woods, to Woodland Garden.
But nothing's changing, sort of, beyond that line. You know what I'm saying?
Well, the, the sightline is certainly changing when we're, when we're outside. In other words, just looking, if you, if you go just where our house is, there is not much that can be done in terms of screening because I've already screened that area with hemlocks and there are 12 to 15 foot hemlocks and there is an elevation of rhododendrons and so forth. I don't think there's much that can be done because it's all our property anyway, on the north side of the driveway.
Right.
And so, I've extended the hemlock line and it's not just a row of hemlocks, it's two, it's really two hemlocks going up the property line. And it stops around where the existing garage is.
Yes.
So, probably right there. And what I see on the landscape plan here is just maybe a total of seven trees, which doesn't really solve the problem.
This, this little area, right, that sort of pale green area, right, between the edge of the driveway and the, and the limit of work, right in there, it's, it's sort of a trapezoidal shape, right there. You're looking for more screening-
Yes, more screening, more screening in there. And those, well, I think, I think what is depicted is a total of seven trees, five larger ones and two small ones. That's not really an extension of the hemlocks, the 12 to 15 foot hemlocks that we have in there. And it's, it's, it, it seems inadequate.
Okay. Can we, can we beef up that screen in that area so that he's not looking right at the house from his garden? Kim, what do you think?
I mean, yeah, you could wrap them, you know.
But it wouldn't be, it's not blocking the view from the house.
You're talking about his garden.
His garden's still a row of hemlocks.
Right.
Basically, between his house and the other side of the driveway, so there's that open corridor now.
He's talking about that area. It'd just like more privacy in, in that area of the property.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we are, it is going up 14 feet.
Yeah, so let's put a few tall ones right in there.
Large ones, please.
Large, large meeting. We're back to 14, 16, 16. 14, 16?
Yeah.
16, okay.
14, 16. Let's do the same, a couple of Norways and a couple of white spruce.
And add maybe four, five more. Norway to go around the corner now.
I'm gonna have five, maybe three.
Three.
Did you actually look closely at that? I didn't really do a lot.
I did, yeah.
You probably, so you know where it's at.
Yeah.
So, add a couple more, three more.
Three more.
Two is already there.
I think 14s to 16s will do it.
Again, I would do two, I'd probably do two different sizes there, so if we have-
Couple of 16 by 18s.
We have eight total, maybe we do three of them, 14 to 16, and the rest of them 12 to 14. Like, we're doing, to mimic what we're doing on the south.
Yeah. Okay, I think that, that would, that would do it.
Yeah, I mean, it should.
He's up.
He's up. Well, he's up, but he's up that way. The garden is that way.
No, I know, but his sight, is his height sight up?
It's elevated.
Uphill?
It's up, it's elevated. It looks down into this. The garden's like-
I think we're about, maybe eight.
It's a little bit similar.
Is it?
Yeah.
So, when I was standing in the-
The house is up.
The house is up.
We're about eight, 10 feet up, I think.
Yeah, but the backyard's about the same.
Yeah, just drop, where are the driveways, it drops down.
So, it does drop in.
I guess you're right.
Okay. How does a tall tree help the sightline? Wouldn't it show, from the garden, we're at level, looking on it from a level grade, what's a tall tree really gonna do?
It's not, it's not that they're hogs. These are evergreen trees.
Yeah.
So, they're- They're broad at the base.
What if they're, they're-
They're broad at the base and, and over the long term, they will sort of give a scaling element to the, you know, this is a big addition on the roof height there.
It's not gonna shade the, it's not gonna shield the house completely, Matt. It's gonna break up the mass in the house.
All right, so Peter, we're gonna add three more. We're gonna make some 14 to 16s, 12 to 14s. And then, they'll, they'll also grow up, so in three, in three or four years, you know, you'll be getting three or four more feet on them.
Um, the, could I ask about the lighting on that side of the property? There are a couple things. One is, I just, we don't want any outside lights shining into our house. And we don't want any lights spotlighting into the woods or anything like that.
No spotlights. But one of the, one of the conversations that we were having earlier is the dark sky compliant fixtures. The ones that, that we are looking at tonight aren't really dark sky compliant. There's a gizmo to be screwed in it. So, we're, we're saying go back and, because they're, they make a million dark sky compliant varieties, but the, the one that's, that we've seen most often is, has the bulb up in the housing, but, in the top of the fixture, so that the light all shines down. So, you're not looking at, at bare light bulbs. That's, that's what we're after. Anyone else have any, yes?
Jim Garrett, Chairman of the Western Roads Trust. I just wanted to clarify on this, is that the perspective of driveway entrance on the Meadowbrook Road has been abandoned on this plan?
It has.
Well, I just wanted to say hi, thank you, and I appreciate it, and more importantly, your neighbors, thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments? Then we'll continue the hearing till what they, well, um-
Let me just look for what we have advertised already. Since hopefully we're verifying all the hands meet or address the concerns we're identifying, do we think we, this should be done within 15 minutes?
Oh, no.
Okay.
I mean, I think we're, there's a, there are a whole series of things that we've talked about tonight. Light fixtures, planning-
Right.
You know, the, the generator, the location of the generator, I mean, the width of the driveway, width of the driveway, there's a million things.
Right, I know there's a lot of things, but, I mean, we're able to also sort of bullet point these out. We don't need a presentation, it's basically just have you enter. No, what I mean is that the presentation involves basically saying, "Okay, here's the new light fixtures, we're dark sky compliant. Here's the driveway at 12 feet. Here's the generator, it's either been reduced, here's the new location." I'm, I'm trying to just figure out, do we need half an hour because then that pushes it to 9:45? 15 minutes and then 8:50?
I don't know, because what we have to do is actually look at the consequences of the things that we've talked about. I mean, it's not where you check a box necessarily.
What I, what I recommend then is just continuing to 8 o'clock and then depending on-
8 o'clock, on what date?
On July 2nd. And then, we're gonna have to just shift. We wouldn't be able to handle it earlier, but we could shift it down to give room if we all suddenly need like half an hour or more.
Yeah, so we're not gonna do it in 15 minutes, I guarantee it.
And can we make note that that is our last, is it our last official meeting until the summer?
That, except for some morning to approve decisions, that's the last one.
So, that's the last one we have until September 10th. So, it's really incumbent to have really polished proof of, so that we can, oh, you can get your proof.
Because otherwise, we'll continue to the, at least the 10th of September.
We're hard with Joe.
So, 8 o'clock, July the 2nd.
Yeah.
Okay. So, do you, um, do you be able to send me the bullet points, just sort of, I'm making sure I, does that leave them in, or? I wrote them down, but just to confirm.
Well, I mean, so that we can just run through things for the board. So, there's saving of the additional oaks, there's the landscape plan to show the variety of the sizes in both locations. Ensuring that all the lights are dark sky compliant, which Hinckley, Hinckley makes tons of dark skies, so that should be easy. There's a removal of the down, right, of those little wall, down lights, just changing it to a different kind of wall light. We have the generator, which now only, which the location should be revisited potentially in the size.
Size, and also the dpa rating at the property line.
Right, so that there, it's meeting the 40 at the property line.
Tree sizes on the south line.
Right, got that.
Tree sizes on the north line.
Tree sizes on the north line, a vision of three trees on the outer west corner.
Yep.
There's, and saving the trees along the driveway, reducing the driveway width, there's, there's checking on the health of the trees in the, in the southeast corner, remember?
Mm-hmm, yeah.